To adopt our agenda this evening.
I move we adopt the agenda as presented. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. So now we will move to item 2.01, our Team Lee Summit Recommendation Discussion. And Dr. Carlson, you'll lead us off in that.
All right. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Team Lee Summit and a great deal of work, hundreds and hundreds of hours of work that have happened this year. And, you know, we talked a little bit about Team Lee Summit, about what a great opportunity it's been. It's not very often that we get the opportunity to talk about how to spend over $12 million on our most important investment, our people in our school district. So, and with that, there's been a lot of discussion. It'll always do that. It's taken some time. But this morning, we went out to our staff, and you have it before you here. And I'm going to walk through our Team Lee Summit recommendation. And really, what we're doing here is two recommendations. One is for a successful debt levy transfer ballot measure on April 4th, and one in case it is not. So I'm going to walk through it. First, we sent out to our folks, and you have their background. As you all know, back in August, Dr. Buck had a recommendation and worked through that with the board. And then the board asked some groups, Team Lee Summit, you know the history on that. And then we landed on in December, the debt levy transfer to the tune of 20 cents. So we have those recommendations prepared. We've sent out draft schedules of what that would look like based upon that work. So let's jump into the first recommendation. So the first recommendation is designed regardless of the election outcome. So regardless of what happens, all employees will receive step movement on all salary schedules. So the four schedules, teacher, professional, support, and administrative, step movement would be given. Next, 508, $508 would be applied to the teacher base of the teacher salary schedule with a like increase, which is about 1.26% of an increase to the other three schedules on the base of the professional, support, and administrative schedule. Next, Team Lee Summit, as we discussed in February during the work session, we do work on looking at market analysis to make sure we're competitive. Meeting those, we had those three Team Lee Summit goals. One of those goals is to be competitive and affordable with our salary and compensation package. So with that, the Board of Education last fall gave Team Lee Summit and myself a charge and said, you know, we need to look at positions that we need to maybe increase pay for. We interpreted that as positions where we're seeing persistent vacancies throughout the school year. So you see that represented here in paraprofessional specialist, paraprofessional specialist intensive, crew leader, custodian, some nutrition positions, resource aide, and LPN, where we're recommending range adjustments due to those persistent vacancies throughout the school year. We're also recommending that bus aides move from a five-hour to a six-hour compensation summary. The significance of that for a bus aide is oftentimes, some of them will work past five hours, which we do pay them for, and we compensate them for. But they do not get the benefit of PTO time. So this will be an added benefit of some PTO time for those bus aides as they move to a six-hour schedule, and also guarantees their pay for up to six hours. That was a request that actually came up through Team Lee Summit, through their representative at the team I wrestled with. So next, they also, we've recommended a revision to the admin schedule indexing to 2%. As we discussed, there's a couple ways to do salary schedules, a flat structure and then indexing. And all four of our salary schedules have indexing built into them. And our teacher and our admin schedules have a range of indexing from 2, 2.5, 3%. And the teacher has actually some more in there as well between the 2 and 2.5, 3%. So what we're looking at doing, because of us being in the bottom third of salary for administrative positions, specifically assistant principal, principal, among others, we're looking at moving our admin schedule step one, holding step 18, re-indexing, moving step one to be more market competitive. We are more market competitive at step 18, so we would hold that. So that re-indexes it. And then folks would stay on their step and then realize that increase to the start of the schedule. You'll see in a document later that the ranges of increase for our admin that are on that schedule ranges from about 12% to 2.4, 2.5%. The new administrators or administrators that are on the nearest step one will realize that the 12% are step 18, and off-schedule folks will be at the 2, 2.5% range. Also, we have a couple revisions to board policy that have come out of Team Lee Summit. First is Team Lee Summit's recommending board policy GCBDA and GDBDA to be revised to add an additional PTO, PTO day for all contract and compensation summary employees. So right now, based on your work calendar, you're set with a number of days off, paid days off, paid time off. So we're going to move those folks that currently get eight to nine days, those that currently get nine paid days off to 10, and those that work 12 months, which get 10 paid days off, would move to 11 paid days off. The emergency day policy will also be revised. With our personal day program, we have some reasons that we restrict whether a PTO or a PTO could be used. Came up through Team Lee Summit, that there's an inclement weather when school is in session provision, which basically, our emergency days are days that are around a holiday, first week of school, when we feel like we need our folks there, last week of school, and then our professional days. So in the, and we look back, we could not find a day where Lee Summit R7 was in session for school, and we said, there's inclement weather in the area, let's say hypothetically, north of the river, which happens sometimes. We've not had a day where Lee Summit decided to be in session, and then we made it an emergency day to require our employees to come in. But some of our employees seeing that policy say, you know, we don't want to not get paid, we're concerned it might be an emergency day. We discussed it and really decided to remove that provision from the emergency day process. So if it's an inclement weather day, folks that, if we're in session, that don't want to travel in the weather, can go ahead and use a PTO, PTO on that day. I'm going to pause there because that goes through the options regardless of if the debt levy transfer passes. It passes, doesn't pass, those are the recommendations. Okay? I'm going to keep rolling then. So levy transfer approval is approved by voters. So Team Lee Summit recommends the additional 5.4 million of revenue that would be, from a successful election, be applied to the teacher, professional, and support schedules. And that would be the tune of, for the teacher schedule, an additional $1,536 for a total of 2,044 to that schedule. And then again, a like increase to the other two schedules referenced, which would, for those schedules, be an additional 3.74, so about 5% total for the support and professional schedules. You'll notice the administrative schedule is not included on that recommendation. We then sent out the proposed salary schedules, and you can see those there. I'll come back to those in a moment, but we wanted folks to, and that was a goal Dr. Buck had. We wanted be, folks to be able to see where they were at, would be at, and what the successful election would mean. We did feel like we needed to provide some additional context as to why Team Lee Summit's recommending market analysis adjustments. So we gave some details and information there. I think I unpacked that for y'all, I'm happy to answer any questions, but unpacked that for y'all in February on, as the goals of Team Lee Summit. Also, unpack the admin schedule and why we would re-index that to be more competitive at the start for assistant principal and other administrative positions. We also made note at the direction of the Board of Education, we were asked to take a look at board policy GCBDA and how that policy applies to teachers getting experience applied to the salary schedule upon hire in the school district. After lots of discussion, it was recommended no change to that policy, and we let that policy continue as it has been written. However, we did decide that, for a long time, about a decade, we've had the practice of what we call off-schedule. You recall in February, our salary schedules for teachers end at step Y, the other schedule's step 18, and most school districts end their schedule there, and might have some addendums or incentives, but that's the end of their schedule. For Lee Summit, it was decided years ago that those veteran employees that are at the end of the schedule will still get a raise, and it would be half of the average increase of the schedule. Well, with that, it's always a bit of a mystery to our employees as to what that's going to look like. So for the spirit of transparency, we're actually going to print our schedules moving forward with all of the steps that people are actually on in the school district. And then we're going to index those steps at half the index that last step is on. So the 2% indexing would move to 1%, the 3% on the teacher schedule would move to 1.5%. So with that, I'm going to click on the example of the teacher schedule, which here, I'm focused on the middle one here, following a successful election. We did format these a little bit differently. We added some shading to make them easier as they got larger to track. But you'll see now, our schedule that we're recommending from Team Lee Summit, we still have the through step Y, and then what business services would use as Z26, Z27, Z28. Y is the 25th step on the schedule. We would show those Z steps moving forward. And the one I brought up here shows what the teacher salary schedule would look like with a successful measure. You'll notice the starting teacher pay would move to 42,370. And then we showed the other schedules, what would happen if the debt levy transfer does not pass. Well, again, teacher is a good one to anchor to because that's what we build our stuff off of, and step A would be 40,834. And then we also felt it was relevant to link the current schedule so you could see for comparison if you'd like. I'm going to pause there. Are there any questions, discussion, anything that I can explain better?
Board member Eslic?
I just had a question about that. There's a GCBDA data document.
Yes.
And I just had a question about the, there's two different costs, and I was just trying to figure out, I guess maybe if you could just explain them to me, and then I can see if that answers my question.
Certainly, certainly. So there's a spreadsheet that Team Lee Summit used called GCBDA data, and it shows the 76 teachers that are impacted by board policy GCBDA. I want to put an asterisk real quick on that 76. We could change that number from time to time because of retirements or resignations, and then we've already hired some folks that this policy applied to. We have a new teacher next year that's coming over from Kansas that has had a long, great career. They'll be able to bring in 25 of those 30-plus years that the person has had in education. So total cost, if we eliminated board policy GCBDA, so all teachers could bring all their years of experience that are currently with us and moving forward, the cost based on the people we have today would be $356,000. Then we started looking at, and actually Nathan Holder developed this to look at, okay, what if we just moved by one step, two steps, three steps, five steps? If we allowed five steps, what would that cost be? It'd be 287,991. So that'd be where if we moved to, say, we would bring 30 steps in moving forward.
Okay, so with the total cost, is that if, like if we wrote the contracts and next year, it would be $356,000 more to pay all those teachers at that level that they're actually at? Or is that to cover, like, I don't know if you did, we did retroactive, like phase one, phase two, and like paid people for their years? I don't know about that. So is that what it is, or is it going forward? Like?
That, if, if we made a change to that policy, these would be costs moving forward.
Okay.
And Team Lee Summit discussed lots of different scenarios. And the other thing you would see is the number of steps impacted, 17. We have one person that would move to step 42. We would have to create a step 42 for that person.
Okay. Thank you. I just was trying to clear up what that dollar value was. That helps.
Absolutely. Yeah, good question.
Board member Foley?
My question's going to kind of go along with the same thing.
Good.
Just because we have heard concerns repeatedly about this policy and, you know, some of it having to do with communication for the other phases. So could you maybe speak to just a little bit about kind of some of the considerations that were involved in this, the decision? Was it just strictly a financial decision, or kind of what, can you kind of tell us what tipped the scales for that?
Yes, I'd be happy to speak to some things that could consider to give you a broad landscape. What I don't want to try to do is represent Team Lee Summit or the voices in the room because, you know, I'll be candid, we spent a lot of time talking about this, and there's a lot of different perspectives, and there was a lot of discussion. I'll say that the recommendation right now is for the board policy to remain as it is written. I would say some things that you might want to consider in that, if the board wanted to look at that, 356,000, there's, that is the cost approximately of a $100 increase to the teacher base and all the other schedules for our staff. This policy has a phase-out impact that is phasing through. Each year, we add another year that folks can bring in, and that's been applied, that would continue to be applied. I would also add that there's consideration about new employees coming to the district and landing on a step 35, 38, 42, if we didn't have this policy. There's another document in the folder titled, scroll to it here, KC Teachers' Years of Experience Allowed. That comes from the Cooperating Schools. They do a survey, and that's the most recent data we had from a couple of years, where you can see that districts will, some will say they bring, allow folks to bring in all years of experience. Some districts you'll see 21, some districts you'll see 14, and then two years later, 16. That reads to us as a phasing in is occurring of their schedules. I would also say that we are unique in that we don't have an end to our salary schedules. That is unique. Most districts, their schedule ends at 20, 25, maybe 30 steps. So we have a system designed that we would have to create steps for all employees based on their actual experience. So that's another factor probably to consider. I'm going to pause there. Others that you can think of that would be relevant?
Can we move? Are we okay to move to the next question?
Does that answer your question, or is there another kind of strand? I'm trying to give you a full menu of types of things a board member or someone might want to consider when looking at the pros and cons of that.
Yeah, that answers my question. It does. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. Board member Murdoch?
356,000 is essentially equal to about $100 on the teacher's schedule. Would you consider this to be an either-or decision based on that money?
Well, I mean, I, that is how we, in Team Lee Summit, as a process, we are giving a budgeted set amount of dollars. And then we look at how we are going to allocate those dollars that are given to us through Nathan Holder's budgeting process and the superintendent. So that is, that is how we approach it. That is one factor, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Get on questions there? Okay. Board member Eslic?
So just back to the questions about GCBDA. So the way that the policy is written, and you made the comment about having to extend the salary schedule out to accommodate the years of experience, but the way that the GCBDA is written, that's going to happen anyway, right? And I'm not, I'm not advocating for not going along with the recommendation, but my point is perhaps it's worth, and this maybe is more of a question or comment to the rest of the board, to consider whether that revision, like should that stop at 30 years, or do we just keep going in perpetuity until we reach, I don't know, many, many decades of experience? So, yeah.
That is a, that is a topic, that is a good topic for discussion, that's probably a good topic for the board. So we had to do something because step Y was the end of our schedule. So my position was, based on our board policy and the forward-facing schedule we had printed, we needed to make some decisions this year about what to do. Coincidentally, the forward-facing of all the schedules remedied that to where now we have a Z26 that a new teacher to the district with that level of experience would be on next year. Okay? So, yes, each year we will add another year. It might be worth discussing, is there a point where we want to say, and this is the cap, like some districts do? And there may be some reasons for us to do that as a school district, to say, here's our cap, and set it moving forward at some point in the future. Or you could set that today. You could say, if we want to credit, most you can bring in to Lee Summit, I'm just making up numbers, 29 years. Say 29 years you can bring in, so then the highest you would be placed is Z30 on our salary schedule as a new-to-the-district teacher with experience from other places. So yes. Or we just each year kind of keep moving and then see if we're making a spot. I think one of the other things we just, you know, have to be aware of is with the strength of our salary schedule for teachers at the end of their career, this does become a recruiting tool where a Kansas retiree, or a KC Mo schools who are in a different retirement system retiree, does help us to become an appealing place for those folks to come over and do what is commonly referred to as double dip. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Board member Sparks?
This isn't really a question. This is more so just some more commentary on conversations that happened during Team Lee Summit. And this is kind of to your question. I, I believe that we did have the conversation on capping, how many years of service would be able to come in. It did go along with addressing the 76 teachers and how would that look? The conversations did go as far to say, what would it go to encompass all 76, and then possibly cap at that number? And I will just say, I was not very forceful in Team Lee Summit, obviously because the vote comes back to the board. But I will just say that the conversation was had, and I did make sure that that was part of the conversation and the dialogue for the entire group to consider while they were making their recommendation.
Thank you. It does feel like if there were conversations to be had about capping or not capping, that it might be, my, my thought would be that seems like a great conversation for Team Lee Summit to consider as a first step. Not this year. If that was a future conversation, it seems like starting that with Team Lee Summit.
I, while, while I respect the role of Team Lee Summit and what they have historically here in LSR7, ultimately, I know that that's, that's a board policy. And I think that that's a conversation that we should be having as a board. But because of the financial impact of the decisions with the dollars of the approval of this ballot measure, that's why I thought that it was important to try to have that conversation with Team Lee Summit. But I would say as a board member and for us, as we receive the recommendation, for us to keep that in the forefront of our mind, is this something when it pertains to capping and that policy that we need to be considering while we receive the recommendation that's coming from Team Lee Summit? Because ultimately, to Ryan's point, was it a, a either/or, that was the process? It was either/or. And when we went down and broke out the different dollar amounts, and obviously, they landed with where they, how they landed. But, but I would say that that was the case. But I believe that, that, I don't know if we necessarily have to wait till next year. I think we still have the opportunity to receive the recommendation, perhaps even honor the process of the recommendation. However, keep in mind the fact that ultimately, it's the board's responsibility on how we think that policy needs to read and how we want administration to utilize the policy.
Thank you. Board member Foley?
I defer this time to board member Murdoch.
I just wanted to make sure that you saw it, so I was signaling for him.
Board member Murdoch?
Well, thank you, board member Foley. I appreciate that. Two, two things. Number one would be to board member Sparks's point, I think that ultimately, we do receive the recommendation, though I, I probably would disagree just a little bit in terms of this late in the game trying to alter how we go about the recommendation. I think in the future, we probably should, as a board, I absolutely agree, we need to have this discussion, and I think there needs to be a little bit of flexibility there for situations exactly like this. My second question is to Dr. Carlson. So my first thing was a point, but this is to Dr. Carlson. Could you articulate, because we continually hear as a board about the communication that those 76 teachers were given and their eligibility for the full phase two? Could you articulate why those teachers ended up falling into that policy and made them ineligible to go to whatever steps they should be on?
Yeah, and I'll, yes, and I'll speak generally, though. Yeah, and and I'll, yes, and I'll speak generally, though, because I think when you when you're talking about people and their careers and coming in in different years and over time, um, there's there's a lot of variables there. So nothing that I say here should be you you just, when you're looking at a person, we have folks that are in the range of 26 to 42 years of experience, and all those situations are gonna be a little bit different. But generally, I'll say that um we talked about last February, the EMS salary schedule transition in 2012 that um placed folks on a new schedule. Remember, we went from that bell-curved schedule that was not very competitive in the beginning or the end, but was real strong in the middle. Uh, folks were then transitioned to a schedule that was more competitive, more flat, more linear. And then uh steps did not equate to years, and and people found themselves in all kinds of different places. Okay, so that's one factor. Another factor is then we had three years for teachers where Team Lee Summit recommended, and the board decided to put money on the base of the teacher's salary schedule and not give steps. Which then um increased our salary schedule. Everybody got good raises. The end of our schedule got stronger. We moved to number one in the metro area. Um, but then we had new teachers coming in, getting credit for experience that might be more than someone that'd been here their whole career. Okay? So now we start talking about these specific folks that came in, and they were restricted in how many years of experience they could bring in. I'll use just an example. Let's say when a person was hired in 2008, they came in at minus 2 of their true experience. Okay? And then they move along. And then 2012 happens, and EMS schedule transition happens. Then that person finds themselves at maybe plus 1 to their years' experience. And then, three years of salary schedule where you don't get step movement, but you do get a base increase. Now that plus 1 moves back to minus 2. And then they're like, so I'm gonna get my, and 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 I've heard that the mindset was, great, I'm at plus 1, I'm back, or maybe I'm not plus 1, maybe I'm right on. And then three years happen where now I'm minus 3. And then, so then I might have been eligible for Phase 1, gotten Phase 1, and my mind said, I'm eligible for Phase 2 because I'm still 2 years off. Well, they're still the same 2 years off from when they came to the district in 2010 or 8, whenever that was. So, that's a very general description that may not fit anybody, but gives you um some of the moving parts as to um why a person might say, hold on, I I've been moving based on these different decisions throughout time, and and it felt like I should have gotten back to my years equaling my experience. Um, but then we do have a board policy that directs us on that. We try to be consistent with that. Did that answer your question, Board Member Murdock?
Um, it it did, and I I think that for those teachers that are impacted, I I believe, um, and this is truly my opinion, I'm not speaking for anybody here outside of the fact that I think that that answer is still going to be a little bit confusing for them in terms of why they wouldn't have fallen in in under uh the Phase 2, Phase 1 and Phase 2 adjustments, with the understanding that I also understand from a legal perspective um that we possibly would have had to waive the policy in order to get everybody to comply with the policy. So I understand the answer. I'm just articulating, and I think there's still going to be teachers um that are confused by that response.
Well, yes, and I think part of that is because there's there's not one answer that applies to everyone, because everyone's situation is is a little bit different.
I I I agree. I agree, but from a simplistic, simplistic's not the right word, but from a consistency of communication standpoint and how um we tried to articulate that. Um, I I hindsight is 2020, um, but going back, I it would have been probably very helpful to make sure that we had articulated the policy um a little bit better in terms of how that would impact some teachers.
Yeah, that, yeah, we 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 can't assume that everyone's fluid in board policy, GCBA, that has a lot of provisions in it, and this is just one that affects a group, and there are other provisions in it too, and I and I get that, but you know, we 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 do work to follow board policy.
Understood.
And I
All right. Are there any more questions? Okay, with Dr. Carlson, did you, did you have something more?
Well, I I had one more thing. I just, I just wanna uh convey that um you know, if there is a desire to look at changing this policy, which it sounds like there's a general, maybe talk, but if there there's a desire to that, it is it is not uncommon for the board in the fall to task us with, you know, we were tasked with looking at GCBA, uh, which we we did, and I feel like we did with fidelity, okay? Doesn't mean everyone's always gonna like the the recommendation, but that that work was done. What I would say is after, it has not been uncommon in the past for the board to say, we want you to look at this, and here's the guidelines we want you to work within. If there's direction from the Board of Education, Team Lee Summit, we want you to tackle this topic, and he here's the 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 range we want you to be in, then then tell us that, and and we'll do that work with fidelity, too. Um, it's just hard for us to we are trying to serve our superintendent and you all well, and it's hard sometimes when we don't know what um what the target is. Is that fair?
Appreciate all the hard work of Team Lee Summit. I think I've heard that from all board members, how much we appreciate the hard work and effort that went into all of this. So, thank you. All right, moving on to item 2.02, Board Self-Evaluation and the Facilitated Board Retreat. So we talked last January about um, as we were doing our book study, about the MSIP 6 um requirement around board self-evaluation. And I had put some slides together um so that we could review what some different options were about board self-evaluation. And out of that conversation, it was also mentioned that we might be interested, instead of trying to come up with our own agenda and presentations during board retreat, that we might like to do a facilitated board retreat this year. And so, in order to do that, we need to put together an RFP. So I wanted to talk through um the requirements that we would like to see in a facilitated board retreat. So that's why I asked, if you could, that you bring the um your Governance Core book, and looking at chapter 7, where it talks about like the governance job. And specifically, I'm on page 122 to help us think and brainstorm. If we would like to bring in somebody to facilitate the board retreat, what are some things that we would like to include as kind of objectives? So what's our overall goal with the retreat? And then, what are some requirements that we would like to include? So, you know, the topics that you'd like to see covered? The thought around um if you'd like to include, and this is more semantics, a meeting like with board leadership to kind of work with the vendor on the actually setting the agenda, given the requirements that we've all participated in building? Um, then that would be included like in the RFP requirements as well. So, understanding kind of the um board retreat we had last year um in years past, thinking about board retreat, um, some some topics that you might consider, like creating our board priorities. That might be something we would say, we would like the facilitators to walk us as a board through creating our board priorities. That might be one topic that we would want to make sure that we cover. Um, another topic might be um, you know, advancing future learning educational opportunities and facilitating a discussion around that. Um, there might be, we'd like to do a team-building exercise, you know, those kinds of things. So I'm just throwing things out to kind of get the conversation rolling. Or Member Foley?
Thank you. As a new board member, getting sworn in in April, attending uh training in May to learn the rules, and then attending this retreat in June, um, there wasn't a lot of time to really get to know the group, to to kind of uh learn some of the basic parameters and dynamics. So I feel like having maybe some of these conversations at this time might be a little too soon for new board members. So I wonder if it would be possible even to have this something, uh, something like this later on down the road? If instead of having one big retreat at the beginning, maybe we do two smaller ones? Or if we're gonna have a facilitated conversation, just maybe a little bit later on in the process, I think would be ideal for the new people coming in that are still just learning the ropes. Um, I know it was a lot of information, especially in in the retreat, we were learning a lot of the basics on, you know, learning about everything that that everybody does in facilities or transportation and purchasing and and all these overviews. And so having that on top of uh team-building and all this kind of stuff might be a little much. So I'm just kind of thinking, I I would like to see maybe a little bit separated, just a consideration.
So if you were gonna prioritize that, would you think about prioritizing the team-building and the work together and board priorities, maybe ahead of certain departmental um reports? Is that kind of what you were thinking?
Maybe, but I I would say it's 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 kind of hard to say, because I think both both pieces are important. But when we know, um, I remember seeing the the presentation with the transportation and bus purchases and how they think so far ahead about planning replacement of buses and all that kind of stuff. That was great information to learn at that time. And and I would think if that component was delayed for a new board member, they might not as understand the operations as much. So it's kind of a I I don't know, it's kind of a difficult situation, but I think that's just kind of something I consider is just it might be hard to cram all that in for someone that's brand new.
So we've talked a lot about the board orientation, and I think I had sent out quite a while back, like MSBA has kind of a timeline for new board member orientation. Um, so maybe we look at that and think about through May, what some targeted things are for new board members? Not just that first day of board orientation, but some different sessions, and we allocate some topics for them to get ready for board retreat. Does that make sense? And it wouldn't be everything. I mean, there would definitely be some items probably that would have to go into June, maybe July as well. But that might better stage people for board retreat.
Sure.
Is that, okay, so new board member. Like, one thing that we've talked about since we did the Team Lee Summit 101 and the Salary Schedule 101, we've talked about for new board members, having like a four-hour session for them. That would just be, get them started at the beginning of the year, understanding what what that looks like. Okay, so new board, let me make a note of that. And then, um, so Board Member Foley, I see your light, and so I'm gonna turn that off. Did another, did? Okay, 'cause I was kind of freaking out. I didn't know if we had like a ghost board member tonight. Okay, okay, I feel better now. Breathe, Kathy. Okay, Board Member Aslake?
Uh, so I definitely agree uh with Board Member Foley's um thoughts about um kind of delaying some of the high-level thinking, 'cause I think um I'm thinking back to the retreat, and I thought the information that we discussed about like the different departments and kind of the goals that they were working on for the year and some of the things coming up, I followed along great with all of that. I think what would have been difficult at the time is to start trying to think about big strategy of the board without really having a lot of context of how things flow and operate. Um, I think maybe adding a component that's directly related to team-building would be fine. I think if we had a facilitated discussion about um some of these uh bigger um all-encompassing topics that I just feel like really require a lot of context and just a little bit of experience to kind of understand how things work and what you're really get grasping your role as a board member. Maybe just a little bit more time before trying to do that so that we get the most value out of it, and it's helpful to our new board members, too. Um, but I definitely think that the board retreat is a great time um to do the team-building side, so we can all, you know, get to know our fellow board members. I don't know if that's um like a two-day component that we could even do. I don't know, but I'm just kind of throwing some things out there.
It almost seems like you guys are suggesting, and I'm just trying to make sure my ears are hearing what I think they're hearing. Like, uh, board retreat session 1 might be team-building, getting to know each other. Um, maybe a little bit of work around what, you know, priorities and policies and that kind of thing, priorities more, look like, and then a follow-up session that would be, uh, let's, okay, now let's dig in, what do our priorities look like for this year? Does that, does that sound like what I'm hearing? Or Member Sparks?
I think that the team-building piece is um is most definitely necessary. And I think that it does lack um with even my experience and then to hear um you two, um, your experience. Um, but I also think um a heavier focus on the board's priorities. And what our expectations are of our one employee and the metrics that we're wanting in the journey of the rest of the of the rest of our time on the board. I think if we focus on us working together and then also setting direction for the year, um, is I think is my top two priorities that I think I would like to see emphasis on. Because just from experience, it appears as if we do a lot of kind of here's some direction, okay, there's some maybe some friction or some differences, so now let's try to fracture that. Okay, here's some more direction. I think we kind of do some, um, and and that is gonna take place, 'cause that's just what relationships do, right? Um, but I think if we um, even when it comes to metrics, we talk a lot about metrics in trying to figure out what the right metrics are. We do a lot talking about what we desire as a board. Um, and I think if we set those type of, if we set that stage from the beginning and the onset, then it would give a much clearer picture even for administration to work um and to provide for us what we have set at the beginning of our um service for that year, so.
Or Member Vice President Fritchie?
Okay, so I'm not gonna be here, but um six years of board retreats and experience with those. Um, I I just wanted to point out that I I think what you're talking about, uh, Board Member Sparks, makes a lot of sense. Um, when I first came on, MSBA facilitated our board retreats. Uh, first was Phyllis Sparks, and then Janet Tilly, and then the combination of Kelly and Janet, and it it it, you know, so you get that MSBA experience because they do this stuff all the time. And they know how to bring on young board members, you know, people who are just new to it. And so I found that very um not, you know, the the knowledge level they had and the comfort, I found it comforting, honestly, uh, because we had some people in there who really knew how to direct a conversation. Um, not control it, but just facilitate it. And I think when you don't have a facilitator in there, that puts the um responsibility on your superintendent uh more so, or his administrators too. And instead of them being a part of this conversation, then they have to worry about leading that conversation, too. And um when you're talking about your one employee and, you know, where the direction and your priorities for the year, having them help facilitate that conversation is great. I mean, there were a couple of years, too, and and I gotta say, the our administrators look at what are our priorities this year, and they will come in with some recommendations on what they think the priorities need to be for the next year. And I think there were a few, at least two or three or four years where we're just like, okay, you know, that's fine, you know? But I do think the discussion needs to be stronger among the administration and the board about uh we are, what are our priorities? board about where, what are our priorities and where are our priorities going to lead us? You know, what's behind that piece and where, what's our goal, our metrics for where we're going to, how we're going to achieve? So I like the idea of a more in-depth conversation in that way. I think if, when I look back to our last board retreat, honestly, I came out of there, I don't know if you guys did, but I was just weary. I was weary of all of the information that just went boom, boom, boom. And it was good information. I'm not slamming the information. It was great information. But it was just like hour after hour after hour of, this is this, this is this, this is this, let's do this, let's do this, you know, here's, and, and I, I don't know how much I actually retained from that, those conversations. So if we can be, or my recommendation for the future, and you take it or leave it, is to, is to maybe go in that direction and let someone else facilitate it, let them do the heavy lifting so that our people can jump in and participate because your voices are important too, in this whole process.
Board Member Foley?
Thank you. So the way I'm kind of looking at it is it seems to be like we've got three things that we're trying to accomplish, which is kind of giving the overview and goals for the next year, team building, and then the board priorities and establishing metrics. So would it be possible to maybe do two of those things at the retreat and then one of those things we have at a work session, maybe a month or two later? So it's not all together, so it's not too much information in one weekend? And that would give somebody new a little bit more time to digest what they've already received and kind of process that before we really dig into, like, I think having the priorities maybe a month or two after would give them time to get to know everyone, kind of learn everything, kind of get a little bit of a better grip on the ropes and then to be able to dive in and talk about, you know, what do we want to see? What are some numbers? What's the data? And really get a little bit deeper into the conversation better than we have so far.
The only thing I have to say about that is I know our administrators out here are going, whoa, you mean we wouldn't have our priorities in June? Because they build a lot of what they're going to be doing for the year with the staff based on the priorities that are developed and voted on in June. So I don't know how.
You couldn't break it into two pieces.
Right, right. I think you can, but.
If it was all in June.
Yeah. We just have to look at, yeah, we just have to look at, you have to look at timelines and everything and how that all rolls out.
Sure.
I have one topic that we haven't talked about that I feel like, whether it's broken into two, I don't have a preference, but I feel like community leadership is maybe a topic that would be beneficial to include in a board retreat. So I totally agree, team building, and I think a big focus on that, working together, the good governance model that, you know, we did as a book study. How do we think about incorporating new board members into that good governance, right? But also then the strategic direction, metrics and accountability, that's a big chunk as well. And then I feel like community leadership is a topic that would be a great retreat opportunity. So what other ideas for board retreat would you want to include? Anything else that either in Board Governance book or? Board Member Sparks?
I would like to make sure that we incorporate a community engagement plan.
Could that be part of community leadership?
It can.
Create?
It can, but I just want to make sure that it's a very thought out plan on how we're going to engage the community and what does that look like so that we can, on the onset, we can let the community know, this is what our relationship is going to look like and this is the involvement that you'll have, this is the access that you'll have to your board in that type of situation. I would like that to be a big piece.
And that might be a great reason, another great reason to split it into two. So if you started community leadership discussions in step, you know, retreat one and then completed the community engagement plan in step two, that might be, so does, does everybody feel like in the RFP, we would want to see it in two steps? Because that's a requirement that we would put in there, right? The vendor, we'd say, hey, we want to meet one date and these are the agenda items we'd like to tackle here, this is, we'd like to, go ahead. Board Member Foley?
Well, if we break it in two, do we need to have both pieces facilitated? Like, could we decide, this is the stuff that we can handle on our own, this is the stuff that we would like facilitated and kind of split it that way? Just so that we're not, you know, having excessive costs if we don't need it? Because I think some of the basics we shouldn't need facilitated, right?
There's, there's pros and cons. The, I'm thinking back to my first year on the board and we had Mac and Jay facilitate the retreat. And then, and we completed in that retreat, a team building exercise, an exercise that talked about like, you know, the matrix of, you know, person, not personality traits, but like how you work, you know, things like that. Like some people are more detail oriented, some people are more high level thinkers. Then we completed board priorities, but we did not do board promises. And we came back, was it like a month later? I think it was like a month later. And we did the board promises at that time. And that was an important piece to finish up because we'd started building our relationships, this, that gave us kind of the norms and the agreements that we were all going to honor and follow. So that was like in, kind of wrapped it in a bow to me in my brain of how, how we, you know, completed that retreat conversation. The benefit of having facilitated discussions is back to the point Kim made, you, that way everybody gets to participate and no one's having to lead or facilitate because we're all engaged and involved in participating. And we're leaving that facilitation to, to someone else. And there's, there's benefit in that, I think, from a board standpoint. Board Member Eslic?
Open to that, but I definitely kind of feel the same way as Board Member Foley about kind of seeing which, which days' agenda items we could probably handle on our own. And we, I don't even know if this is something that has been done in the past, but we have quite a few skilled administrators who probably have done a lot of team building. I don't know if that would be something we could request that maybe they kind of facilitate some of the programming when it comes to like icebreakers, getting to know each other or some of the, you know, work together on that agenda and maybe the facilitation is done by another person so the entire board can participate. I don't know, maybe that could be another option. But I don't, I guess it all depends on the cost too, because I think maybe that would help contextualize whether this would be something that, do we want to spend, is it worth the money part of it as well? Can we handle it? Are there other options? And would it still generate the results and the spirit of the event that we're trying to capture? So I'm open to both, but I definitely kind of lean more towards us doing it ourselves, but.
So what I'm hearing is we'd probably want in the RFP, things priced a little bit separately so that we could determine kind of the buffet of what we wanted to have facilitated.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, the menu, good point.
Menu.
Okay, Board Member Sparks?
And this is not really, and I don't know how much time we have on this discussion, but this is not necessarily about the RFP and the hiring of a facilitator, but this is more so a board kind of comment. I would like to see us do more of the heavy lifting with each other than a facilitator being the driver of what is happening. So therefore, we as a board set, what are the goals that we want to achieve as a board? And then I think once we do that, then I think that would be the easiest way to identify if we need a facilitator or is that something that all of us could play a role in meeting those goals? Because to me, if, depending on what the goals are and depending on what the willingness of each individual board member is, I think the ultimate commitment just needs to be, I'm willing to give my all. I'm willing to be vulnerable, I'm willing to be open, I'm willing to be candid. And I think if those are the type of discussions that we're able to have as individuals, then I think, I have, I struggle with facilitators. And most of the time I struggle with facilitators because they tend to be in addition to the problem and not necessarily to help facilitate. They're an additional voice. And what I don't want is, I don't want to limit the voice of the seven of us because there's a facilitator present. I've encountered some good facilitators, but I've also encountered some that have worried me.
That's what I was just going to say. A good facilitator facilitates, doesn't participate.
Correct.
Right. So maybe that's a requirement that we want to stay.
That's a very big requirement.
Yeah.
And I think, and to Kim's point, if MSBA is a resource and if it's a free resource, and I don't know if there's a cost.
It's not a free, yeah.
Okay, so if it's not free, but I would think that it would probably be more affordable than a true third-party facilitator.
It's reasonable. MSBA is very reasonable.
That those conversations are had and those expectations and then plus, we have relationships with MSBA. We have relationships with those facilitators. They know the culture of this district. And so some of those things are benefits with MSBA. But again, I just want to make sure that the focus is the board and the focus is us working together and us accomplishing some goals.
Love that. I totally agree, focus is the board. But I was smiling because it almost feels like, Rodrick, that you're suggesting that you might facilitate the next book study. Oh, okay. Focus is board. Appreciate that. Really good points there. Okay, any other, okay, so what I have, let's do a quick recap. Oh, Board Member Foley?
Thank you. I would ask, what is our, what is our next step after this discussion?
Great question.
Yeah, what are, what are we going to do with this conversation that we just had and how will this affect our board retreat?
So I've taken notes. I'm planning to put those notes together for you guys to all review. Then we'll feed those notes, once you say yes or no, we'll feed those notes to our purchasing department. They will put the RFP together, we'll make sure these requirements that we've lined out here are included. And then we can say, you know, there are definitely some vendors that we've used in the past and could we include them, but they'll also look for vendors as well. And to your point, if one of the requirements is someone that knows us well, someone that has worked with us in the past, let's, we'll include that also so that that's lined out as well. And then they'll help us with that, sending the RFP out, we'll get the costs and the information back in. There may be some additional things that they say, hey, we always do this in a board retreat and maybe you guys might want to look at that. And so there might be some other things that we didn't think of tonight that they might also say, would you be interested in? That might come back in their proposals. Then we review their proposals and the costs and then we, we make a determination on how we want to move forward. So the timeline with the purchasing, I'm not sure, I didn't ask Krista, but we can get that and get that back to everybody. And then, because that's kind of why we needed to discuss it tonight, so that we can get moving. So that we know that we want to do a June retreat. Now we may want to do June A retreat and June B retreat, but let's, let's get that information rolling and going.
On the RFP, would those interviews come back to the board?
To interview the?
Interview the individuals that made the cut.
Would you like that to happen?
I think that would be a great idea.
Do you want to interview the actual facilitators or do you want to interview the vendor?
I think it would be great to interview the facilitator.
Okay. All right. Okay. So let's, we'll include that then as a requirement. Oh, and what did you guys think? Would you want the option for board leadership to, or maybe the whole board, to have a meeting with the facilitators ahead of board retreat, just to do a review of the agenda?
I would like that to happen with the full board.
Full board, okay. Full board, agenda planning. Sound good? All right. Then I do want to circle back. In the slides, there were options and that's in everybody's board docs as well. But we had talked about then self-evaluation. And so in that self-evaluation, there were some options around, Linda, would you mind scrolling down to approach? Options for approach? Yeah, thank you. So we had talked about custom survey, you know, custom reporting, we had talked about using a vendor tool like MSBA. So thoughts on that? Do we want to wrap that into the RFP as well to think about board self-evaluation? Do we want to keep that separate? But what's the timeline that we want to set? Because I think we need to make some decisions around when we're going to do it. And, and if we use the governance core thoughts as what we would look at from an evaluation topic standpoint, that might help guide us as well. So thoughts around that? Board Member Eslic?
I think it would be helpful to get a couple of options with pricing. Like what would this review tool look like? What kind of questions would be on there? Because I mean, I have, definitely have some thoughts and I looked up a few when we originally talked about this. I just Googled some different options too and I think you brought some and then.
Can you scroll down a little bit to vendors' options for approach? Go ahead.
Yes. Not from a pricing standpoint, but more from like a, what questions would be asked? What would the format look like? And there are a variety of options and directions that these take. So I think it would be helpful, I mean, I'm fine with these requests with the pricing, I'm just, this pricing in here is for the, the survey tool, right? Okay, yes.
Yeah.
Fine, I would want to see what questions they're providing, not just the price.
I don't know if they'll give us the actual questions because then you could kind of just take that and do it on your own.
That's fair, but then how do we know what?
But I do think they could give us the categories.
Okay.
So they might have like 10 questions that are about oversight and accountability. Or they might have 10 questions about community engagement. So if they gave us kind of the categories, would that help you think about if you'd like to use their tool or not? Or maybe we could even have them do just a short presentation of what that looks like.
Okay, well, maybe, I don't know, and maybe just follow my thought process here. Maybe we as a board need to rewind and figure out what our goals are. Are we polling the community? Are we asking amongst ourselves what our effectiveness is? Are we asking our administrators to have some input on what they see, having seen, I mean, Dr. Buck's feedback? So is it all of that or, I don't know?
This discussion, and that doesn't mean that it's a closed discussion, this discussion was about a board self-evaluation. So we would, so this is what most boards in Missouri are doing right now, is they are only evaluating themselves. So each board member answers questions based on how they feel they rate, they rate their board members. And that's the evaluation. And then if you use, for example, MSBA, what happens is each board member completes the information and then you get a facilitated report, that's one option. Or you can choose to facilitate that discussion with the report yourself. So those are some options just from how MSBA works. Then there are other, you know, survey tools and opportunities that we got, you know, there was one vendor that says, well, we don't really do this, but we could work with you. And that's going to be a little more costly because it's more customized. But if we think about, you know, MSIP 6 doesn't define what board self-evaluation looks like. It just says that you'll do one. But I think what the thought process is, is around board governance. So how are you at community engagement? How are you at making sure that your district performance and your superintendent performance is monitored and effective? You know, it's the governance pieces as opposed to, you know, anything, anything else.
That makes sense. So I mean, the MSBA one's $150. I mean, we could always start with, this is the one we're going to try. Is that not right? And the survey tool is $150?
That's for us to facilitate for, by ourselves.
Right, but you. Right, but using their survey.
Yes, yeah.
So, what I'm saying is, we could, I mean, it's $150. So, we could just try that, facilitate the conversation, and then after this year, if we discover that we need more support and it doesn't work, then correct and try something else. Just a thought, I don't know.
Good, all good thoughts. Great. Board Member Foley?
I guess I would wonder, when would the self-evaluation take place? Because we could wrap it in the RFP that we're doing for the board retreat, if we wanna do one big package. But at the same time, I think if we're evaluating how we've been doing so far, then I think June is a little bit early to, to put that in there. So, we need to have a time delay, and I wouldn't wanna exclude someone that would have a great survey for review just because they wouldn't do the retreat mediation. So, I kinda wonder if we can maybe put both options, like you were talking about, kinda the buffet for the RFP, of including that as a potential option to get pricing for, you know, if we're gonna do this evaluation later on down the road, what would you charge us? But then allow other vendors who maybe don't do the retreat, the option to also bid for an evaluation later.
And so, if we were just, so just to clarify, if we were just looking at a board self-evaluation, well, for the, yeah, for most of these, as long as it's like under $1,000, we don't have to do an RFP.
Okay.
So, yeah. So, that might take it out of that conversation, the RFP part. But we can certainly put that in as a buffet item on the RFP and then determine how we wanna move forward. And the timing, you're right, we probably need to think about and, and determine that. So, let's circle, should we circle back to that conversation? The only other thing that I will say, appreciate the saving, the cost savings. I, I feel the same. We wanna be very careful with taxpayer dollars. $300 to have someone else facilitate us and tell us where our challenges and opportunities are, is a whole lot different message than if, or Member Sparks is facilitating that conversation, telling us where our opportunities and gaps are. I'm just, I'm just gonna throw that out there. For $300, it seems like a great team-building opportunity to not have one of us facilitate that, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Plus, my fee is higher than $350.
Great.
So, clearly, MSBA is actually the cost savings, instead of having Board Member Sparks. Got it, okay.
That's great. Love it. All right, so, I'm hearing included in the RFP, think about, can we take that out and, and work on it separately as well?
And also, like a summary of what types of questions they're, some sort of, right, just some sort of understanding of what it is they're trying to survey? Or if we get to even pick, if we get some sort of say in that survey process, or if they just use a template and that, you get what you get.
That sounds great. Do we get to pick and choose? I like that. Because am I hearing that if, that we might like to? So, it's actually a requirement, we might like to pick and choose, right? Okay. Great. All right. So, thank you. I think that's a great conversation. Any other input, questions on that? Okay, awesome. Then, we will move on to item 2.03, and that is around board committee reports. So, it came up in a meeting, I think two meetings ago, maybe last month, maybe the month before, that we would like to think about some more time to be able to do committee reports. And so, I wanted to just open that up for input and conversation. We have committee reports in the board meetings. I think we all feel, you know, being conscious of people's time, we all wanna keep those brief. But sometimes, I think many of us feel like there might be more opportunity for learning as board members, and knowing that we represent everybody else, more opportunity to get feedback in what we take to those conversations. So, what are some thoughts or options that you'd like to look at? And are there specific committees? Because I do think we might wanna roll a broader discussion into a board retreat or a future topic. But for this year, are there specific committees that we wanna focus on, and, and how do we wanna do that? Or, Member Eslic?
I think at least, right now, during the board meetings, I think if we focus our committee reports on really, instead of making, I'm gonna try to say this, but I hope nobody takes offense to it. Instead of making it a list of things that we've attended, more of a, this is a meeting that I participated in, and I'm gonna focus on the nuggets of information that are really important to my fellow board members. And the, the community maybe doesn't necessarily need to hear, or really, maybe doesn't care all that much that we all attended, you know, Team Lee Summit, or the Chamber Gala, or whatever. It's, it's great that we're out there, and the community is gonna see that anyway. But I think if the board report, in the meeting, the focus is to inform our fellow board members, then maybe that focus should continue to be on, all right, what can I pull from these meetings that I attended that my fellow board members should really be aware of? And if we can be conscious about that intent, then the board committee report could probably be fine where it sits in the board meeting. But that's just, I don't think, I don't know that we necessarily need like an extra meeting or something like that, but I'm open if, you know, others have a different perspective on the value of that.
Or, Member Sparks?
So, kinda to your point, I want not necessarily to enhance our board report, I want to enhance our board conversations. And so, I don't know if that lies, I don't believe that it lies in our board meetings, because that's us to conduct our business, that's for us to approve things and contracts. But I would like to see us create, or even allow it to be part of a work session, to where some of our hard-hit committees, when the work is happening, that we're having dialogue amongst the full board about what's happening in some of these committees. I think if there's major RFPs, those are things, that's also another opportunity for us to have dialogue prior to us coming to the dais and approving or voting on something. Team, 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 I think your mic is off.
Yeah, thank you.
I think also, policy committee, I think, because we are the board that sets policy, and so I think even having those conversations, even, even to the point of what we're tasking the policy committee to address, I think that should be coming from the full board having conversations and then giving direction to administration on what those policies are. I think Team Lee Summit is an important one. And, and I'm gonna be very transparent. If these were not committees that I would not have served on this year, I would not have known that these are probably committees that we probably need some more in-depth conversations about. Because my first year of serving, I just kinda took things for face value, kinda just heard what my colleagues had to say when those hot items came, and I, and I supported it. I think that it's important that every board member is privy to some of the in-depth conversations and work that is taking place. So that not only will we have a respect for the process, but also we'll have a respect for the time spent, but then also, so that we know that our individual voices were also in that room, even though we may not have been in that room.
I think all good points. I know that we had, you know, we've tried to flesh out some kind of written report, but I appreciate, I think, that robust conversation and input and gathering. So, would you, you mentioned board work session, maybe a topic monthly on board work session, and we might set what committees should be discussed in that work session?
And I think that's just a, I think that's a very kinda small conversation, just, hey, board, you know, who has something very hot going on in their committee? And then, you know, hey, I want, I propose that this become our work session conversation of board committees. And then, the board just kinda just have that dialogue with each other to say, yeah, this is what we wanna talk about this particular month.
Would you, but we'd set that ahead of time?
We, we would set it ahead of time, but I, I think, and, and that's where administration, that's where Dr. Buck can help us. So, if we, if we know what the next 12 months are looking like, or nine months, then he's able to say to us, you know, we're gonna have salary recommendations this year. We're gonna be having, you know, obviously, policy is, we can give that direction, and that's where I think that should be coming from. So, policies would be that conversation. I think if it came to, you know, we're gonna have benefits and insurance conversation, RFPs coming up, I think that's gonna be another big one, '24, year '24. And so, I just think, and that could help kinda guide what those conversations are, and then we can roll it out. That's just...
So, that's how we've set our work sessions this year? But weaving in the committee updates? I think that timing, that's important. Really good point. Yep, great. Board Member Foley?
Thank you. He took a lot of what I was gonna say. I do think it's important to have the dialogue, and I think a, a work session is a good opportunity to have that. I thought about, why not just have a standing agenda item unless we all say, hey, we don't have anything to talk about today? Just like today, it says board committee reports. Could we just have it, that, that open, broad topic that we, you know, set aside maybe 10 minutes? And so, if something comes up during the month that we're like, hey, I really wanna dig into this and have the discussion, that's what's brought up in the work session? So, we don't necessarily have to say, well, in November, we're gonna talk about CSIP. If it comes up, if something comes up in September and somebody's in that committee, they could talk about it during that time and just have that designated space to talk about what's going on in the committee. I like that idea, to be able to have that engagement kinda more in a timely fashion without having to necessarily structure it out too far. But also, and the point about what we actually have in our public meeting, I, I like hearing about school visits and, and events that we attended, even though it's not an item for decision, and even though it's not a, a committee, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for the members of the community to hear all the things that we're involved in, and to highlight some of the great things that are occurring in our schools that aren't necessarily a committee. Like, some of us went to the Robotics Alliance Open House the other day. You know, if that, that's not a committee, and that's a great time to highlight those things that people might not necessarily are going on in the district, that's not an agenda item. So, that's something that I would like to continue to do when we talk about what we've attended, is just kinda at least give a brief overview of some of those things. And we don't have to really go into detail, but I think it lets the community know that we're doing a lot beyond just what's happening up here on one Thursday evening a month. Like, we're, we're actively involved, and so, I, I think it's a great opportunity to highlight that.
A little difference of opinion there, so maybe we table that, and that can be more fleshed out and discussed at like board retreat. But around the thinking about a work session topic, I do, I like board members being able to bring things. I do think from a time management standpoint, it would be good, at least by like board leadership meeting, if board members could weigh in, hey, I'm gonna be wanting to talk about 15 minutes of insurance committee. That would help just from a time management, then we would know what else to put on the work session agenda. Do you see what I'm saying? Okay. So, maybe some structure, a little bit of structure around that piece. And as long as we have the agenda item defined as board committee updates, we should be okay from a sunshine. Great, okay. Great. All right. Board Member, Vice President Fritchie, did you have any input around that? Okay. Just wanted to check in. All good? All right. Girl, you're still here. A little bit more. All right. Board Member Eslic?
So, I actually echo both Board Member Foley and Board Member Sparks. I agree wholeheartedly. And I think if you're kind of executing what Board Member Sparks was talking about, where we kinda pull in board committee reports into a work session, where we can kind of delve more into it, then it opens up more time to do exactly what Board Member Foley is talking about. So, you don't feel conflicted like, well, I don't need, I can't talk about this because I really need to get to the meat and potatoes of what the board needs to know. So, I really like kind of splitting that up. So, but on that topic, and I know I already spoke, so I'm just gonna bring it up really quick. And this could be a totally separate topic, but we talked at one point about discussion meetings, and the only reason I bring it in is because we kind of talked about that open forum, format, that Board Member Sparks was just kinda referring, referring to, giving us that opportunity as a board to have those conversations and being able to have dialogue. And it doesn't have to be a separate meeting, cause as we just talked about, we can just put that as a, a general agenda item on an open meeting to be committee reports, or whatever that topic is that allows us to have, to respect the spirit of the sunshine law and be open and transparent, but also give us the opportunity to have an open conversation about a general topic. So, I'll, I'll leave it at that, cause I talked too much already.
No, I agree with you. I think balancing that, because we have to post the agenda, so that's a, you know, must-have. But how do we work with that and be very transparent? We're not trying to circumvent a sunshine law, right? But, so maybe if those topics are identified ahead of time, then we think about how we put that on the agenda. Great. And I think, continue to discuss how we have discussion meetings and opportunities. Where are you going for it? Okay, all right, all right. Then, are we good on closing this down? So, for next month's work session, I'm gonna put board committees on there. We're gonna put board committees on there, and ahead of, like by board leadership meeting time, think about what committees you might like to include in the discussion. Sound good? Okay, awesome. Then, we will move to item 2.04, Blue Ribbon Commission. And Dr. Buck, are you sharing, or Dr. Berger, or Dr. Shelton?
I'll share if you're here.
Yes.
All right, well, welcome, everybody. Sorry, I'm, I'm tired of being in this room. For the audience's sake, I got tested positive for COVID Monday night, so I've been in isolation, so I'm happy to join you via phone and actually engage with some people, cause this room's getting kinda lonely here. So, what you have in front of you is a resolution that'll be in the regular meeting as well. If you recall, last fall, the Missouri School Board Association, there was a, a session with a panel of state board of education members and the commissioner. And Charlie Shields, who used to be a legislator and actually wrote the current formula and helped get it passed, is now a state board member. And he had said, I wish the state formula needs to, it needs some work, and I wish the legislators would engage us and ask the state board to take a look at it. From that conversation, several districts across the state have been looking at it as well. There is some whereas here, and we could change it if you'd like. But we know that every year, the percent of our revenue, depending on the state funding, it continues to go down. This year's down to 27%. We also know that our increases in the state foundation formula has been averaging over the last six years, 0.61%. So, it is, the SAT has been, the state accuracy target's been flat, at that 63, 75 for quite some time. It's not keeping up in inflation, even in low inflation times. So, as our electricity goes up, or food costs goes up, or giving a step goes up, we're relying more and more on a local funding. So, there's several districts across the state are gonna be taking this to the Board of Education. I believe tonight, Melville and maybe Kennet are taking it tonight, and there's other districts going to as well. We thought we might help out the state board by asking the state board to convene another Blue Ribbon Commission, this time looking at the foundation formula. And maybe that could be a stimulus to take a look at something that is being held flat and thus relying more and more on local funding.
Or members' questions? Vice President Fritchie?
I just wanted to comment my thoughts on this. I think this is an important resolution. I, I think that the state does need to step up and revise the formula and provide schools in the state of Missouri with more funding. I don't think that they have taken the, the hard look at this formula for quite some time. And in addition to that, I think there are several bills out there that chip away at the amount of money that's available for schools. And so, I think it's a good idea for, if we could get every state, every, every school district in the state of Missouri to sign this revol, resolution, I think it would be fantastic to, all of us to weigh in together. uh, to all of us to weigh in together to say, enough is enough. It's time to look at this and it's time to make a positive change to support our public schools in the state of Missouri. So I am totally in favor of, of signing this resolution.
Board member Sparks?
Dr. Buck? Is this resolution identical to the same language other than the changing out of our district name to the other districts that have already adopted this or that are, are going to adopt this resolution?
The resolution part, the section one and two will be the exact same. Uh, whereas, all of them I think are going to be the same except for two. If you can see, there's two specific, the Lee Summit, the 27% uh, funding, uh, revenue, uh, piece. And there's another one being less than 1% growth, which is actually 0.61%. Those would be different for other districts. Um, but in the large conversations we've been having, um, we've all given districts permission, hey, if you need to take one, one as out, whereas out, or you think you want to add something in, you certainly could. Um, what I considered adding was, uh, showing the percent of the state budget that's going to K-12 education and decrease over the last four years. But I chose not to put that in because we're asking the State Board of Education to do a Blue Ribbon Commission and coming up with a, a recommendation for legislators to consider. And the, the State Board of Education had no control over that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Board member Sparks, good? Any other questions? I will share, I, oh, they did a legislative session as they always do. And one thing that was noted, and I, I'm agnostic around term limits. Um, so don't think I'm in favor or not in favor because I'm agnostic about it. But one thing that they pointed out was with term limits, one downside that we see is, uh, legislators don't have years and years and years of experience with things like funding formulas. And so where in the, in the past, when we didn't have term limits, you might have legislators that absolutely supported public schools, got in and helped build, you know, on a committee, got in and helped build funding formulas and things like that. Because of term limits, you just don't have that longevity and that experience in, in many of the legislators. So to me, that raises the importance of having a committee look at this, having recommendations put together and built. Again, how we rely on our experts, I'm sure in Jeff City, we hear from our legislators as well as some expertise on things like this. So I think that's a really benef, big benefit to our students overall, so I support it as well. Board member Sparks?
Will this be coming as a voting item? On our...
On our agenda for this meeting, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's in consent, uh, in consent, yes. And everybody comfortable with that in consent? Okay, great. Alright, any, no other questions around that? Okay, then we will adjourn our work session and head upstairs.